Councilmember Phil Seth?
Here.
Councilmember Fine?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Niss? Councilmember Koo?
Here.
Mayor Scharf?
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Here.
Councilmember Wobak? Seven present.
All right. Well, thank you. Today, we have a joint study session with the Palo Alto Youth. Thank you all for coming. It's so great to see all of you here. And you're the staff liaison? Welcome.
Hello. Yeah? Is it on now? Okay. Good afternoon, council. My name is Jose Perez. I am the Teen Program Specialist for the City of Palo Alto's Community Services Department, Staff Liaison for Palo Alto Youth Council. Today, they have a presentation on their accomplishments for this year. At the end, they will open it up for questions, and they're really excited to be here today. So, I'll go ahead and pass it on to Uma Ball, who is the President of Palo Alto Youth Council.
So, just before you start, would it be all right if everyone just introduced themselves briefly, so we know who you are?
Sure. Do I answer?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Deanna. I'm the Secretary. I'm a junior at Gun.
I'm Matthew. I'm the Treasurer of PAYC. I'm a junior at Gun.
I'm Soheeney. I'm the Gun Liaison, and I'm a sophomore at Gun.
Like Jose said earlier, I'm Uma Ball. I'm the President of PAYC, and I'm a junior at Gun.
I'm Luisa. I'm a junior at Pally, and I'm the Pally Liaison.
I'm Dara. I'm the Vice President of PAYC, and I'm a senior at Pally.
If you guys want to tell us who you are too. Do you want to just stand up? It's probably easiest. We don't have to use the mic. You just stand up.
All right. Hi, I'm Bridget Quigley, and I'm a sophomore at Pally.
My name is Simran Fuji, and I'm a junior at Pally.
Hi, I'm Ani Chang, and I'm a senior at Gun.
Hi, I'm Chloe, and I'm a junior at Pally.
My name is John Graham. I'm a freshman at Gun.
I'm a sophomore at Gun.
Hi, I'm Adji Lee. I'm a sophomore at Gun.
I'm Divya Tadmadi. I'm a sophomore at Castileia.
My name is Alyssa Salas, and I'm a sophomore at Castileia.
My name is Lani Key, and I'm a senior at Gun.
All right. Well, thank you all. So, now you want to proceed.
Okay. So, like we said earlier, we're the Palo Alto Youth Council, and this is our annual State of the Youth. So, like I said earlier, my name is Uma Ball, and I'm the President of the Palo Alto Youth Council. So, the Youth Council is composed of nineteen members, and our overall goals are to provide programs and projects for the youth, to address prominent issues, and help by implementing projects, to increase the youth involvement in the city, and to work with you, the City Council, to contribute youth input. So, I'm Uma Ball, and I'm the President.
Again, I'm Dara Yu, and I'm the Vice President.
I'm Deanna Kristoff, and I'm the Secretary.
I'm Matthew. I'm the Treasurer of PAYC.
I'm Luisa. I'm the Pally Liaison.
I'm Soheeney. I'm the Gun Liaison.
And Simran is not here right now.
But she's the Castileia Liaison. So, our theme for this year was finding balance. Every year, at the very beginning, we go on a retreat where the entire council brainstorms about different issues that we face as teenagers in Palo Alto, and then issues we know other teenagers also face. And through that, we come up with a theme for the year that we are going to try and focus all of our events and everything on. So, this year, we decided on finding balance. We found that we believe lots of teenagers were struggling with things like balancing health, and friends, and grades, and all of these different things, as well as communication with different people in our lives. So, we decided on the overarching theme of finding balance.
Hi, I'm Deanna Kristoff. I'm the Secretary.
This is Simran. This is Bridget, and this is Ani. So, our subcommittee was called Palo Alto Roots, and our goal for this year was to publish a printed literary magazine that would include art and writing, and all sorts of, different sorts of content from youth all over the community. So, our goal with Palo Alto Roots was to engage as many teens as possible, whether that be through the publication process. Our team of publishing was comprised only of Palo Alto teens. So, the magazine, I believe all of you have a copy, what you see in front of you was done completely by teens for teens. So, teens were responsible for applying for a grant. We were responsible for gathering submissions. We were responsible for putting the magazine together, and we were responsible for distribution.
Hi, so my name's Bridget, and I'm a sophomore at Palo Alto High School. So, as Deanna said, our goal was to publish a printed issue of PA Roots, which we completed just a couple of weeks ago. And there were many steps involved in the process of creating PA Roots. And so, first, we formed the subcommittee within Palo Alto Youth Council, which was the four of us. And then, we advertised around the community to recruit other members to help us design and layout and compile the magazine. And then, we advertised at the high schools that we represent, such as Castileia, Pally, and Gun, through various broadcasting systems and flyers. We advertised to teens how they, so they could submit submissions. And then, we gathered submissions over a period of about one month, from the end of January to the end of February. And during that time, we categorized the submissions in various categories, such as women's rights, dystopian fiction, nature, and many more. Then, we set a production date at the end of our submission window, and we designed the pages and compiled the magazine. And lastly, we sent the magazine to print, and we received it a couple of weeks ago, and we are now in the process of distributing around the Palo Alto community.
So, the Palo Alto Roots has actually started two years ago. In our first year, we created a website, and we published three articles. And last year, we actually came out with our first printed issue. So, this is our last year's magazine that I can pass that to you as well. And this year, we decided, well, actually, we got more submissions. We were able to expand our magazine from twelve pages to twenty pages. And we're also able to get a really diverse array of content, which allowed for, and we simply got so many submissions, we could publish one for everyone. And we also were able to get a consistent team around fifteen people to come in and help compile the magazine and lay it out, so that we had a really nice magazine for this year.
For next year, we definitely aim to continue Palo Alto Roots, just because we think that as Palo Alto Youth Council, one of our main goals is to bring teen voice to the community, which is exactly what we do with Palo Alto Roots. We bring a lot of teen voice, a lot of teen culture to the city alongside school-specific publications, such as Guns, Pandora's, Box. This transcends all of the city and brings together everyone of teenage, so that they can express themselves. Our goals for next year include publishing our issue earlier, just to avoid that time drag, and to keep it at twenty pages, because we found that to be a really manageable and a really good magazine size to maintain quality. We also plan to advertise more to get the word out. Right now, we have had a really good reception, but we want to get the magazine out distributed towards more of the city next year. Thank you.
And now, we'll hand it off to School and District Communication.
So, we are School and District Communication. I'm Uma.
I'm Soheeney.
And I'm Luisa. Simran is also part of our subcommittee, but she couldn't be here today.
So, one of our projects this year was the Titan Triumph Initiative, and it was first started in PAYC the year 2014 to 2015. And the purpose of this initiative was to prove that grades, like, because grades are highly stressed at our schools, but we know that they're not all that matter. And so, they're aimed to redefine the meaning of success, since that was our theme that year. And it shows that students should develop a well-rounded personality, since qualities such as teamwork, responsibility, hard work, diligence, and kindness are highly valued in all societies. And so, it helps give students another source of strength, since the teachers presented with the cards that I dispersed around the table. They're, yeah, that one right there. And so, basically, the teacher just writes a little note on it, and then gives it to the students, and it helps strengthen the student-teacher bond, since it gives them like another trustworthy adult to talk to in times of stress. And it connects to our theme this year, finding balance, because it shows that life is not just about academics and grades, but also about having a well-rounded personality.
So, Uma and I implemented this program by speaking at the weekly staff meeting a couple of months ago. So, basically, all the staff at Gun, like counselors and admin, all meet in this one area. And then, we explained the program and how we wanted it to affect the community and our goals with it. We passed out the cards at that meeting as well, and that was really fun. And then, after that, we gave more cards in their mailboxes, and we furthered our program by meeting with the principal, the vice principal, the student executive council, and counselors and other admin. And our other goal is to implement a similar program at Pally next year.
So, as the Pally Liaison, we actually have an event happening tomorrow, where at lunch, Youth Council is going to provide materials to make stress balls, and we're going to have a little like aromatherapy DIY satchels for students to de-stress during Dead Week and during finals. And this was a really important event to us, because we feel like it encompasses our idea of finding balance very well, in that it's a way to help students balance mental health and taking care of yourself, as well as studying for finals and our like academics and grades. Castileia was going to do an event like this, but they actually already have lots of things like this happening throughout the year. So, they decided to focus more on helping with the Pally and Gun initiatives.
And now, you'll hear from the Outreach Subcommittee.
Okay. Hi again. So, as the Outreach Subcommittee, we are responsible for identifying issues in the broader Palo Alto community. And one of the issues that we came up with, as we all know, is a very contentious issue, is the topic of traffic and transportation. So, what we did is we created a survey to address traffic and transportation-related issues that directly impact high school students, with the hope of getting a youth perspective on these issues. And we distributed this survey to Gun, Pally, and Castileia students, and through it, we were able to determine which issues were most inconveniencing and problematic for youth in Palo Alto.
So... Hi, I'm Chloe, and one of our survey questions had the respondents rank their frustration with Palo Alto traffic on a scale of one to ten. And what we gained from that question was seeing that some people are super bothered by the traffic and others not so much, and so, we just received a really diverse response from this question.
Kind of going through some more of the results. Nearly three-quarters of respondents indicated that traffic is most problematic between 7:45 and 8:15 a.m. on weekdays, which coincides with the morning commute. And nearly seventy percent of respondents said that they had been deterred from driving somewhere in Palo Alto because they were concerned about traffic or finding parking. And of those people who responded yes to that question, the overwhelming majority said that the location they were deterred from going to was downtown Palo Alto.
Another question on our survey was, we had people describe how they felt if bikers were dangerous, or if drivers were causing danger in the Palo Alto community. And the results indicated that a lot of people felt that bikers were unsafe, however, not that many people were bothered by the drivers.
And more general survey results. So, we asked a series of questions where people would respond with either they strongly disagreed, disagreed, neither agreed nor disagree, agreed, or strongly agreed. So, for the "The quality of my life is significantly reduced because of issues with traffic," people, for the most part, disagreed, or were kind of ambivalent. And for the question pertaining to the City of Palo Alto doing more to alleviating issues of traffic, an overwhelming majority did state that they believe that the city should be doing more.
A portion of our survey had specific questions for each high school, and the results from the Pally survey indicated that the most pressing issue to students at Pally is that the traffic lights near town and country are not synchronized. And from the Gun-specific results, we determined that students reported they were somewhat frequently late to school due to traffic and not their own poor time management. And from the Castileia-specific results, they reported they were having unfavorable interactions with neighbors and trouble with parking.
Okay. So, kind of moving on to what we can take away from the survey and potential solutions. So, sort of the overwhelm, or undertone throughout the whole survey was that safety, especially when it related to biking, was a much bigger concern than sort of the inconvenience factor associated with traffic. So, youth in the community are very concerned about their personal safety while biking. And sort of some, we had a free response section of the survey where people could put in their own input about potential solutions. So, some of the things that we saw repeatedly were a bike bridge, I think, around Alma and Churchill, so right near Pally. Also, many requests for synchronized traffic lights, more protected turns, and an increased crossing guard presence. And so, that's kind of it for us. And so that's kind of it for us, and now we'll pass it off to the Publicity Subcommittee.
My name is Akil.
My name is Jonathan.
I'm Matthew.
I'm Sahini.
And we are the Publicity Committee, and our role in P A Y C is to invite a broad audience to all of our hosted events. In order to do this, we expanded many of our outlets and platforms to connect with more students. So the process starts with us meeting every Monday to not only plan what our posts on Instagram and Facebook will look like for that specific week, but to look ahead to other weeks and start planning early for events that would need a greater amount of publicizing. So actually, I think it was on the slide before. There you go. Put out of work. Yeah. So here we see snapshots of our Instagram page and weekly updates that P A Y C was planning. And as you can see, there's some pictures that represent some of our events such as intramural basketball and the Jobs Fair, which we will discuss later. Our followers keep rising, which signifies that more and more teens are being updated on P A Y C events. And now I'll be handing it over to Jonathan with our website.
So next up, we have the P A Y C website, which can be accessed at www.paloalthoyouthcouncil.wordpress.com. And on the website, there are tabs about P A Y C, current projects, upcoming meetings, P A Y C bylaws, and past youth councils where visitors of the website can learn about past and current events and projects. We have the same information on our website as on our Facebook and Instagram to keep all of our social media platforms uniform.
So our Facebook was a platform for all things P A Y C, and it was really great because people could contact us personally through this. And we uploaded photos and a lot of P A Y C events, like the Youth Drop Expo and intramural basketball on there. And it was also a place where other subcommittees in P A Y C could post. And it became our most popular social media outlet, and we had an average of 10 likes per week. It was the most interactive one because of that. And yeah, we also promoted our surveys on that, so a lot of people in the community could see what we were up to and learn more about P A Y C.
So as a Publicity Subcommittee-hosted project, we decided to continue our intramural basketball tournament at Gunn High School. This tournament was kicked off last year where we had around 30 students come in during their flex times and play in an organized three-versus-three basketball tournament. This year, we were able to host the same tournaments, but had over 50 students participating. The ultimate goal of this tournament was to de-stress students taken over by school and allow them to develop teamwork and leadership abilities. This took place during flex times, which is a time set aside for students to complete work and meet with teachers, which we saw was being used inefficiently by some students. So through the help of a ThinkFun grant, we were able to award trophies and gift cards to the winners of the intramural. And with the help of Chase Harmon and M S A Sports, we were able to host a great tournament that had a great reaction from students. From this event, many students have been exposed to the council and are looking forward to other intramurals which we will host next year. And now I'll bring up the Youth Friendly Business Subcommittee to talk about their year.
We're the Youth Friendly Business Subcommittee. I'm Audrey.
I'm Divya.
My name is Alyssa.
And I'm Wendy.
And one problem that we noticed was that teenagers find it difficult to obtain jobs, mostly because they either do not have the connections or they are unaware of the skillset needed to become an employee. And so ever since the 2015 to 2016 school year, we've been planning for two years to host this Jobs Fair that was actually held last month at the Mitchell Park Community Center. And what this Jobs Fair was aimed to do was to provide students with the opportunity to find jobs and to attend workshops to hone their skills and find the skillsets needed to become good workers.
And so this event that we held was held on April 9th from 2:00 to 4:30. So during the event, we had around 10 businesses. And so each business was at a table outside and presented their internship and job opportunities to teens. Also throughout the expo, we also had a few of the businesses hold 30-minute workshops on job skills for teens in nearby rooms. And in total, we had a turnout of around 100 participants.
As we mentioned on the previous slide, at our Jobs Fair, we hosted workshops and invited individuals and businesses to come host them. For example, Asian Box hosted a workshop on entrepreneurialism, and an individual, Grace Hu, hosted one about interview tips.
The other two workshops we hosted were Job Search and Building Your Own Brand. So we invited Hat Tip, which is a high-tech company, to talk about Job Search, about how to locate and find companies who are hiring Palo Alto through mobile apps. And in Building Your Own Brand, Asian Box taught our students how to effectively market and build your brand for your startups or companies or events. So both of these events give teens resources about how to effectively find and to acquire jobs. And now we'll hand it off to Sahini to talk about the overview of our year.
So to give an overview of what we've done on P A Y C this year, our successful projects include the P A Roots Literary Magazine, the Titan Triumph Program at Gunn High School, which emphasized qualities in students besides their grades, the Paly Wellness Center activity, which is going to happen tomorrow, which is a de-stressing method for students during Dead Week, the transportation survey for Palo Alto teens, and our social media, which had over 80 likes on Facebook, 110 followers on Instagram, and an updated website, and our Youth Drop Expo, which had eight companies and over 100 attendees, as well as our intramural basketball tournament at Gunn High School.
So as the year comes to a close, we look forward to improving our council next year. Our 2017 to 2018 goals include to continue our existing projects and expand on them as well. We're looking towards hosting events early in the year and to get started in early fall. Additionally, we hope to expand our theme for next year and receive input from students themselves on what they want us to focus on. We plan on doing this by conducting a survey at the beginning of the year. We will ask students from all three years to describe their greatest city issue. We will base our theme based on the results of this survey. Finally, in the near future, we hope to recruit students from all of Palo Alto schools and to get a great diversity of students on the council. And now I'd like to invite Uma to discuss our goals for communication at City Council.
So we would love to improve our communication with City Council next year. So this can include quarterly visits from a City Council member to our P A Y C meetings. And this can also include our first and last meeting. And we can also have brief updates sent to you guys by email, just summarizing what we talked about in the meetings and what we've accomplished. And then during our events, like the intramural basketball or the Jobs Fair, like those are examples from this year, we could also have a City Council member visit just to see what we're doing. Okay, so thank you for listening to our State of the Youth. Are there any questions?
So thank you all. That was a great presentation. So council members, have any questions? Tom?
Yeah, it was a really nice job. It's great to see everything you guys did. Do I understand there are only one freshman, is that right? So kudos to you. Hopefully get some more freshmen involved. So how was the magazine distributed? Like, who gets copies? How many copies did you make?
So we, this year, because we had an issue with a greater amount of pages because we only have $1,000 from ThinkFun, we have 400 copies total. So what we did was, because we have a subcommittee that is part of Palo Alto Youth Council that is in charge of organizing the printing of the magazine, but we recruited a team of students from outside as well. So what we did is we assigned each student a place or a certain location to distribute, for example, university, or California Avenue, or the libraries. And then we gave each student a stack of newspapers that they're responsible for distributing.
Cool. This looks really good. I'm going to read it when I get home. And I'm really glad to see intramural basketball. It seems like that was pretty popular. Curious if you're going to try to do it at the other schools. It sounds like it was Gunn only, right?
We're waiting till Paly gets a gym. We don't have a gym right now.
So did Paly students come over, or it wasn't possible during the day?
We decided to just keep it at Gunn this year, and we were waiting for Paly to kind of expand, or to build up their gym and the outdoor basketball courts. So we just kept it at Gunn to kind of see how it was going to turn out among the students. And we plan next year to expand it to Paly and other other high schools.
Great. And then I have kind of one more serious question, which is, I'm just curious what you guys think of the track monitors and what you would think if we cut back on those monitors? Do you think they're good to have them there on the tracks? Anybody has any ideas? Curious what you guys think.
It means the train tracks.
Yeah, the guards on the train tracks.
The people who are there on the train tracks who watch?
Yeah.
I think they're very, I think they're great. I think it would, well, especially in a certain area. So on Churchill, you have, you have the intersection with Alma, and then further down at the intersection with Castilella Road, where Castilella extends to Paly. And we definitely need someone there because it's a stop for bikers who are going across and not for cars. And they don't really stop that often, and I've almost gone hit a couple times as well. So maybe if we, kind of, if they're helpful, let me offer someone for their gowns that they cover that entire area.
You're talking about crossing guards.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I was talking more about the people that monitor the tracks, but thanks for that.
Okay, yep.
So I cross that Churchill train track crosswalk every day. And I think to a certain extent, they're helpful. There are definitely times when people will get very, very close to waiting in the train tracks, and they'll have to be pushed further, but then they kind of get pushed into the street. And so it's never like a dangerous place, but I think that there's a larger issue than them being there or not. I think that the backup just gets to be too much, that even if they were not there, the same thing would sort of happen. So I think, yes, they're helpful, but there's also kind of a bigger congestion issue in that area, if that makes sense.
Also to add on, I'm not sure if we could answer for the whole youth right now. So if this is like one of the questions we would like to be answered by the youth, we could definitely, next year, make a survey and have more youth opinion on this to answer the question better here.
Did you have a comment you wanted to make over there? I thought I saw you. No, okay. Other council members, questions?
So has the youth, so totally awesome job that you guys did with the presentation. And I'm new to this, so it's really informative and just amazing what you guys have done. I did want to ask, is there any plan moving into the future that you might want to engage or take what you've learned and go into the middle schools to help guide the middle schoolers, you know, especially in the eighth graders before they start ninth grade? Is there any plan where you guys are planning to do that?
I'd take that as a no.
Palo Alto Youth Council, although that could be definitely something that we work towards, and actually with Palo Alto Roots, we have been able to get some middle school participation. One of our staff members this year was a middle school student, and we definitely have been receiving submissions from middle school students that we've published. But in general, we try to focus, I think, more on high school students. But if you, if, you know, if we feel that's something that middle school students and the idea of interacting with students earlier before they get to high school to make that transition easier, that's definitely something that we can look into.
Adrian?
So thank you all for showing up tonight and for presenting. This is really great. I want to praise you all for joining this Youth Council. I think that's really great of you. When I was at Gunn, I certainly didn't know it exists. But I'd encourage you all to stick with this. It seems like you've got some good skills in terms of putting forth a problem, looking at ways of solving it. I like how you're often to do surveys, just keep on learning. One point, though, when you were giving some of the traffic data, that was actually really interesting. And I think us all in City Council, traffic is a big priority, so we looked at that. But I will say, you know, the kids getting to Gunn a little late, I'm not sure it was because of the traffic. At least in my day, it wasn't the traffic. Thank you so much.
Karen, you?
Yes, well, congratulations. It's an amazing body of work. I look at all these projects, I'm like, in one year? And this is the school year, right? Not the whole year, the school year? It's an amazing body of work, so congratulations and thank you very much. A couple of questions. One is, you know, there are surveys done by adults. I was wondering if you would think about doing a survey about what would get more students to walk or bike to work, if you might get same or different responses? And if there's, you know, more interest, less interest, what the impediments are? So something along that line. That would, you know, hopefully help students and help the city. So that's one. And the other is, you had the outreach about interviewing and youth-friendly business, and that's been a topic for some time now. And I really appreciate that that is ongoing, if you will. And helping with interview skills and that sort of thing is pretty critical. I'd also be interested in, and maybe you'd like to do a little bit of research on this, of how many students want to have jobs that don't have access to jobs or don't know how to access jobs? And then also, on the other side of that, how many businesses that you contact express interest in hiring teens compared to those who don't? So, and the reason for that is, you know, want to make sure any youth that has an interest in getting a job, getting experience, getting work experience and interview experience, has that opportunity. And then also, if the city needs to do more to do outreach to our business community to make accessible jobs for the youth. So a couple of things to throw out there for you all. Thank you again, and congratulations.
Greg?
Yeah, I'd just like to add my fellow council members' comments. This is great work. Thank you for being involved in the community. I think we need more youth involved in city government, so thank you. I just have a quick question, maybe one of you guys could respond, which is, in terms of like the after-school programs in the schools, what do you guys think should there be more, is enough? Is it overcrowded? I mean, I was curious to know your feedback as users of these programs, what your thoughts are.
I honestly really like a lot of the city-sponsored after-school events. Like, I'm also in the Teen Advisory Board, and there's, a lot of people get them confused, but Palo Alto Youth Council is more towards like finding problems that the youth find problems and like solving them with programs and like events. And Teen Advisory Board is more about like involvement in the community and throwing like events to help with the involvement for the teens. And there are also a lot like the T-Lab, which is for the library, and then there's like the Arts Council, and there are a lot of really great activities for after-school, and I think those are good.
Corey?
Well, first, let me apologize. I came in a couple minutes late, and your time is very valuable, so I appreciate you being here. And I really appreciate, as a couple of my colleagues have mentioned, the work you've done giving us this presentation. I was just curious, if you guys had any additional thoughts you wanted to share with us about what do young folks in Palo Alto, yourselves and your peers, what do you do for fun in Palo Alto these days? You know, I can recollect to, you know, when I was a teenager and, you know, some of my fellow students, and if there was a survey, you'd probably get better answers if it was anonymous, but I'm just curious, you know, what do you see as, you know, what folks do for fun, whether it's after school, on weekends, or even during vacations, especially stuff that you do here within Palo Alto, and what you might see as lacking?
So I think one issue that I've noticed is that a lot of my friends and people I've talked to have had things they did in their free time over middle school. And then when they come to high school, they're so caught up with their academic work and like different sports and stuff, that they drop activities that they really love and they really enjoy. And that's one issue that I think we've all kind of discussed before, like in our meetings. So I can't like pinpoint what like Palo Alto students like love to do for fun, but I think that that's a really big issue, is that even I've had to drop things that I enjoy because of like being so like, you know, occupied with my schoolwork and, yeah, so.
Yeah, to add on to that, I've also noticed, like, I used to do a lot more of like art and just like fun little things, but then when you get to high school, there's like a lot of studying. But I think a lot of it is like our theme, finding balance, so you have to make sure to choose the right things that you actually want to do, not to just do things for the sake of doing them. And then to like leave time for like taking your dog on a walk or like watching a movie with your And then to, like, leave time for, like, taking your dog on a walk, or like, watching a movie with your family. And to answer your question specifically, like, what people like to do for fun, I think a lot of people like to go to the school dances, and a lot of people like to try the PMT shops, Pro Milk Tea, and, yeah.
I don't know if anybody else here has felt this way, but I have noticed, leaving middle school and going into high school with me and also many of my friends, the mindset that kind of sets in is, if this isn't gonna help me get into college, why am I doing it? And I've definitely experienced that, and dropped things that I, you know, wasn't sure would advance my academic career, or whatever it may be. But then also, through that, and kind of thinking, oh, this might get me somewhere, I've actually realized lots of things that I am interested in. So I don't know if anyone else has felt that way, but doing extracurricular activities that I think would be a good opportunity, like, they might coincidentally look good on a resume or whatever it is, but then also being able to actually find things that you're passionate about through that, like, this was something like that for me, like, the beginning of freshman year. I, or, what's the end of, I don't know, whenever it was that I applied, I thought like, oh, this, like, is gonna be a really good way to, you know, like, start being a leader and everything, and then I actually found that, like, I'm really passionate about this stuff. And so I think that it is different for everyone, but coincidentally, sometimes things line up, and I've found that that's also true with lots of my friends, that we've found things that we're passionate about through kind of being pressured into them by the community, if that makes any sense.
Can I say one follow?
Sure.
Well, I, I guess the next question is, that pressure to, to focus one's time more exclusively on things which are academic, or which will support your academic future, I'm curious, from, from where does that pressure come? Is it from parents, from teachers, from each other, all the above, something else? Right, right back there?
I think generally in this community, it's based around, it's like, it's very collective. Your son's pushing to do better, your parents pushing to do better, and just the whole area, the place we live in, it's just overall, you know, it all pushes you to do better, settle, and just to do things that you really like. So it's not rather just one specific thing, but I think it's pretty collective.
Well, I agree with what Mikhil said. I think also it's just the, the atmosphere that sort of exists in the city, maybe, I mean, it's not just the city, but I, from my experience, it's just, it's a very competitive atmosphere and environment, and I can, you know, I can see that at my high school, and also through other high schools. There are people I've talked to, and so it's, I wouldn't, I mean, as long, as, along with parents and teachers, and sort of the school being the pressure, it's also your peers, because there's this competition to do better, and to take the higher classes, and to get into the best college. And so I think it's, it's the overall atmosphere, so I think that that was something that we were trying to pinpoint this year as the Palo Alto Youth Council, that we need to find a balance, because, you know, like Luisa said, if, if I'm doing an extracurricular by the time I get to high school and it's not helping me get into college, why should I be doing it? Because, you know, you get your atmosphere, everybody else is starting nonprofits at age thirteen, and, you know, making an app by age ten, and so then you feel like you're under that pressure to then do that as well, because if they're gonna do that and get into Princeton, then I need to do that so I can get into Stanford. So it's the, you know, it's the overwhelming peer pressure and competition to do well, along with the pressure from your parents and your family in the schools.
Can I take right back here?
I think I do agree with that very specific sense, that pressure, but I think a lot of it, I personally, my friend, a lot of the pressure comes from ourselves, just because we know that we can do better, and if we're not doing long class, then happily make sure that we are, so that we're actually learning the material. So I think, I know a lot of us, especially the reason why we're here is because we know that we have the potential to do good and to grow. And so in addition to, I think the atmosphere provides us with the mindset that we should always strive for more, and then a lot of the pressure we put on ourselves is internal. So that's why finding balance is so important, because if you change the mindset, there's only one way to find academic success, and that there's multiple ways to find success.
Yeah, I definitely, I think it's a little bit of a domino effect, like, in my school, even if I feel that I did well on a test, or if I know that I hadn't mastered the material, but I feel proud of what I did for the amount that I knew and for the amount that I studied, when I hear someone complain that they got a ninety percent, then I also feel that I should hold myself to that standard. And then I see my mom, who, for example, is like a Bulgarian immigrant, she's never had to worry about college admissions, she's never worried about, in her youth, she's never worried about what extracurricular she's gonna do. I see her absorbing and reflecting some of that stress, and then suddenly you're just surrounded by all of this, that didn't, that just stemmed from kind of this one attitude that was there all along.
Eric?
Yeah, thanks. You guys, you guys got a lot of stuff done this year. I was just wondering, is there, is there anything that sort of fell off the list that you wanted to do but couldn't because of time, or money, or resource, or something like that? You're gonna get, what was it, and are you gonna get to it next year?
So usually, the Palo Alto Youth Council has a forum, and we've had a forum, I think, last year and the year before, and I'm not sure the year before because I wasn't on the Youth Council, but we've noticed, like, that the attendance had been dropping a little, because I think people seem, think that, like, the need for a forum is less since it's been a while, since, like, we've felt like a huge tragedy, you know? And so I, I think we decided to instead hold the jobs fair, because we wanted to focus more on, like, empowering people, rather than just holding an event that wouldn't really help anyone. So if we do feel a need for it in the future, we'll probably hold it again. But, yeah, we're trying to focus more on, like, more empowering events.
So, piggybacking off Councilmember Wolbach's questions, I was wondering, what kind of hangout spots beside the T pro, the T place, would you like to see in Palo Alto, you know? I mean, I, once upon a time, we had a bowling alley, you know, a bowling place to go to, and once, and, you know, I mean, I've, from other towns, from where I come from, there are arcades and all this kind of stuff. What would you like to see that Palo Alto, the city of Palo Alto can provide, where you guys can go hang out, and not just at Starbucks, you know? Or the milk place, but...
So, me personally, like, I really like the teen area and the Mitchell Park Library a lot. Like, a lot of people I know go there, and they, like, meet to do homework, and then, like, talk a lot, or have fun. And like, a bowling alley arcade sound like really cool, but like, a lot of Palo Alto teens, I think, like, well, he said, focus on, like, doing their academic work a lot. So if you have an area where it's like, like a study environment, it's like really good to hang out as well. And I don't know, I think it's really, like, youth-friendly.
You guys are a very serious bunch here.
I, I agree, the teen center is really great, the only thing is it's not very close to either of the high schools. It's just, it's next to one of the middle schools, and I will be after I graduate from middle school. But, yeah, moving something closer to one of the high schools would allow for us to actually have a space where we can, I guess, hang out and not focus so much on school.
Yeah, especially at Gun, we don't really have anything near us, so, like, during lunch, lunches are really short, so you can't really go anywhere. And if you wanna, like, hang out somewhere after school, if someone doesn't have a car, or like a bike or anything, you can't really do anything. And so I really think, like, bowling alleys and, like, arcades would actually help with, like, make, creating more balance, because I feel like we don't really have those right now, so if we did, then like, if we were just, like, bored on a Friday night, or like Saturday night, then we could just, like, call our friends and be like, hey, you wanna go to the bowling alley? Instead of just, like, staying at home and just, like, doing nothing. I think, I think, like, fun things like that would really make a difference.
I'm Simran, I'm the Castelaya liaison.
Okay, I'm Simran, I'm the Castelaya liaison. And what I've noticed in a lot of, okay, I think Palo Alto doesn't have a, I think there's a law against having tall buildings, is that a thing? Okay, yeah, so I know we have sinarts, but, like, there's not that many young people there, so that doesn't seem like a very, like, hangout hub spot. But in a lot of other cities, like Redwood City, that's especially a big one. The movie theater is a big place, especially on Friday and Saturday nights, there's a lot of young teenagers there, and that's a place where a lot of people like to go and hang out, especially if there's restaurants around there. So I think, obviously, if there's a law that prevents it here, that won't happen, but just, like, having some sort of, or a bowling alley, that kind of thing where it's an organized event, but you can just drop in, and so, something like that. I think, like, a movie theater especially, is, well, that would be good.
Do you think this is a question that you could add on to your survey for next year? Thanks.
And you wanted to answer the question?
I think, I find myself personally, one of the most popular places to hang out is like a park, or just anywhere that is free to get into, because we're, like, relying on the wage jobs. So I think well, having things such as in a bowling alley or a movie theater would be really nice, and I think we should have them, we should also keep in mind, like, keeping it accessible and affordable for people who have, like, twelve dollars an hour jobs. And so I think, like, more stuff such as the Mitchell Park Theater and having the movie theaters, just to have, like, a broad range of activities that are available would be beneficial.
So I just wanted to, just wanted to understand briefly, when you talk about a place to go, is it a place that's near the high schools, would it be like a place to study, like at the Mitchell Park Library, has that, has those kind of rooms? You'd want something created there that's, that's close to the high schools, or, or what are you looking for exactly? Maybe no one? Because someone said they wanted rooms close to the high schools.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking, like, at our high schools already, we have, like, libraries, and we already have the Mitchell Park Library and stuff. I think, like, maybe we could focus more on, like, places where you can study, but like, also places where you can also, like, relax a little, because I think we need, like, all Palo Alto kids need to relax a little. Yes, that's a great idea, a great idea.
So would you'd actually like to see some sort of retail stuff near, near Gun? That's really what you're looking for, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I think I was thinking about having something in the Mitchell Park next to Pally. We do a town country, but our library's not that great. They're redoing it, I know, right now, but like, we don't have, like, a central place where you can, like, eat and study at the same time. And so having something like that would be really great, just some sort of space. I guess Pally can look into something like that, I know they're redoing the libraries. The town country people do go to, it's not, I don't know, I don't really go to the town churches.
It's for lunch.
If you go to get lunch, but you don't really go out.
And in addition, just sort of piggybacking off of what multiple people said, I think that along with sort of a place for, you know, academics, if we have libraries, and we have, like, retail, and then we have, you know, restaurants, but I feel like in terms of actually, like, some, somewhere, if you were to say, like, where do you hang out in Palo Alto, I'd be like, well, um, like, my house. In a sense, there isn't like a, like a hotspot or a place, and so I think, like, something like an arcade or a movie theater, like, I know that, you know, on weekends, like where my friends are going, if they're going to, actually to a place, it's not somebody's house, it's to Shoreline to go see a movie. But the problem with that is, it's, you know, it's harder to get to because it's far away. But I mean, if, but then you go there and this, you know, there are people there and it's fun, and it's sort of a good atmosphere and a good environment, there's an arcade inside of it, and there's movies, and it's a fun place to hang out, except for it's so far away and it's removed, and it's, you know, it's not near anything. And so I think that something like that in Palo Alto would sort of increase the atmosphere of people staying in Palo Alto, but not, you know, sitting at home studying, because when you're at home, then, you know, your parents are like, okay, why aren't you studying? You should be doing this, it's a sort of a place where you can go and not have the, somebody looking over your shoulder.
Right. So I noticed the bike bridge for, over Churchill was something people talked in the survey a lot about. I, we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna consider doing a bike bridge, I think that's too difficult. We have talked a lot about doing a tunnel, you know, like they have the Homer Tunnel, doing that at Churchill. So that's something that would actually, would, would be great for, for the kids at Pally, obviously, since that was on their list. And I was a little unclear, when we talked about Gun, you know, we just redid Arastadaro there, was that a positive for Gun students? Because, I mean, a lot of it was talking about making bicy, you can say no if you don't think it was. You know, a lot of it was talking about making it safe for bicyclists along Arastadaro, and has Arastadaro made it easier to get to Gun for you, or worse? Or would you like to go back to the way it was, or what were you thinking about that?
I feel bad for, like, taking all the time, but I feel really strongly about this. Like, Arastadaro, I think it's become much safer for bikes, but, like, there's also, you can take Maybell, and that's another way to go, like, that's the way I go when I usually bike. But it's caused a lot of traffic, like, I usually, like, the latest I can leave my house is like seven fifty-five if I don't wanna run into traffic, so it's, I have to wake up a lot earlier, and school starts at, like, eight thirty, so leaving, like, more than half an hour earlier is, like, is a lot. So even though it's made it safer for bikes, like, it's caused a lot of traffic, so.
So you would say it was worse overall?
Yeah, I think it is a little worse.
How many people think that? Just the two of you? More of you? Well, I know, but a lot of you went to go to Gun, right? I mean, yeah.
I would move a mile from Gun, sometimes if I get out of Gun, I drive to school to back. And if I get out of school, maybe like, if I leave about fifteen minutes later than everyone else, there's so many parents and so many students driving, it's just that it can take me up to fifteen minutes to get home one mile off of this.
So it's quicker to bike?
And it's one hundred percent quicker to bike.
So why do you drive? Just curious. Anyway, is there anything else you guys would like to tell us? Is there anything else you guys would like to tell us briefly, or anything? Anything we didn't cover that you guys have a burning desire to say?
I guess the only question I have is your guys' ideas of communication between us next year? If you have anything you would like to propose or suggest?
That's a good question. You talked about having a coun, right now we have a council liaison who's supposed to liaise with you, and I heard what you'd like, is the person to come to four meetings a year roughly. But the other thing we could do is we could schedule, that we could have four different council members, one comes to each meeting, so you get a different variety of perspectives. I don't know if that would, something that would seem better. You know, you should tell us, we don't wanna impose how we interact with you. You should tell us how best we could interact with you. And that could be one council member who's got responsibility, or, like, the mayor could appoint four council members and work it out amongst themselves, that four of them each go to one meeting, and that way you're not, I mean, you don't wanna council member at every meeting, that would be overwhelming, I assume. And so, you know, you tell us what you think would be most helpful to you, and then we'll try and figure that out. And, you know, you can communicate, you don't have to tell us right now, but you can also communicate through the city liaison, and let us know what, what you guys want. All right? Well, thank you very much, really appreciate you all, how you did.
Can we take a picture?
Sure, absolutely.
So, is everybody connected?
There we go.
Jose's gonna host it.
It's all the good CS.
I look overwhelmingly tall.
I do.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. 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 Thank you. Good job.
Baylands Interpretive Center that was rebuilt last year. And that opened Earth Day in this year. In addition, we are redoing the boardwalk at the Baylands. And that's many, many stakeholders and regulatory agencies. So there was a lot of work that had to go into the design for that last year. And we are moving along to get that done by not this year, but next year. And then the last thing was that we got final title to the ITT antenna farm, which is at the corner of Embarcadero and 101. And that was a big deal because we've been working on that with the city since about 1998 or something like that, or 95. So finally, we can work towards getting that dedicated as parkland. And then we also started the major golf course reconstruction last year. And spent a lot of time looking at the plans and helping staff to get ready for that. And so that started and well on its way. The final thing on that page is the Junior Museum and Zoo. We had several meetings with that organization as far as how it affects Rinconyada Park. And we wanted a holistic result that would marry the two wonderful pieces of the city. So that's now pretty much ready to go. I think they're finishing their funding right now. So on the last page, we have, on the last page, the other things that we worked on last year were things to do with management of the park. We had a lot of discussion about what to do with aquatics at Rinconyada Park and whether or not we could work with another outside organization to manage the aquatics. And that's going to happen this year in one form or the other. So that was a big deal. We also spent some time looking at the restroom policy. I know that everybody wants restrooms, but not necessarily in the park right next to their house. So there's been a lot of give and take and a lot of listening to get some help to the staff on how to deal with that. And then we did a redo of the park's website, which was pretty exciting. It hadn't been done in a while. And then the last thing is that there was a lot of discussion about synthetic turf policies versus natural turf and what sports and what age levels and which parks needed synthetic turf versus keeping it natural. So there was a lot of discussion about that. And I think the staff has now have a policy for when to use synthetic versus natural. And then we did a lot of work on parks connections. Obviously, the biggest one is the Highway 101, Adobe Creek Overpass, which is now ready to go. And so there was some work on how to best do that from an aesthetic and from an ecological and from a traffic flow viewpoint. So we gave a lot of input in that. Also, Stanford paid for an improvement to the flow of pedestrian and bicycle traffic from the Palo Alto Transit Center to the El Camino Park, to the Stanford Shopping Center, and on to the Medical Center. And so we had to give input on that discussion. And that's happening. And then the other one that wasn't so successful, but we spent a lot of time on it, was the east-west corridor trying to connect Alma to the Baylands with bicycle and pedestrian starting at Matadero Creek. And so we learned a whole lot about what we can and can't do. And we're still hoping to make something happen. But we spent a lot of time on that. And then the last thing is that we obviously want to continue to grow the parks system. And a parkland acquisition is going to be something we need to deal with over the next 20 years. And the AT&amp;T property has just come up. And we need to be able to jump on that and see if we can't add that to Bolware Park. So all of that happened last year. That's all I have.
Okay? Yep. Before I move on to priorities, I want to talk about the master plan. Because the master plan did a lot of work. Because of the master plan, we know more about the city now than we've known for many years. And so we now, instead of just guessing, we are making informed decisions. And so on the next slide, I overview the analysis and the outreach that we did. And the first thing we started, we looked at, well, what do we have in the system? What parks do we have? What facilities do they have? What kind of condition do they have? And same with the classes. What classes are recreation and recreation? Which are the most popular classes? Then from that, we moved on to geographic analysis. If you walk out your front door, how far do you have to walk before you hit a park? And there's very nice plots in the master plan of that. They both looked at general parks, but also parks with certain features, too. Next was demographics. We're planning parks in the future, and who's going to be using those parks? And for example, today, right now, almost 40% of the people in Palo Alto speak a language other than English at home. So if they speak a different language, they may have different cultural preferences, and they may have different parks and rec needs. So we really have to take that into account. We also looked into trends and saying, if those trends continue, in 10 years, half the population is going to be 55 or older in Palo Alto. So we have to make sure that the parks and rec are consistent with those trends. Then after the trends analysis, we looked at the need summary. If we're going to build some more athletic facilities, do you build more tennis courts or lacrosse? What's most popular? And how are the popularity changing? So that's in the master plan also. But the last one is, I think, the most important, the community outreach. We did a lot of community outreach. You can see there's many types of surveys. Some of them were individual, some of them were groups, some online, some in person. So we really asked a lot of questions for a lot of people. And patient people of Palo Alto really provided very good input. But I think the best two are the last two, the prioritization. Because one of the problems, if you ask them, do you want this in the park? Or do you want that in the park? People tend to say yes, yes, yes. You know, their eyes are bigger than their stomach. And we don't have the budget or the land space to make all those. So prioritization, we gave each person a mythical $10 and said, how would you spend that $10 over these park projects? And most people split it over many projects. But some people, like dog park people, put everything on dog parks. And so even though they're a fairly small group, their passion also is very important. So that was nice that we were able to capture that instead of just a yes, no. Okay, so let's move to the next slide. So now what are our priorities going forward? And one thing we learned from the master plan is that relationships are really important. We had a lot of interaction with people, also interaction with group. The top of that list is P A U S D. That in the surveys, two of the most popular projects were new swimming pools and new gyms. Those are great projects, but very expensive projects. And P A U S D has swimming pools and gyms. And so before we spend our money, really should make sure, is there a way that we can use the pool or the gyms in P A U S D and not impact them? Now, obviously, we're not trying to get something for nothing. We have to develop this relationship and make sure that this is beneficial to both the city and the P A U S D. But that has a lot of potential just due to the cost of the facilities. But it's just not about money. I mean, if you, for example, if you want to improve soccer fields, who do you ask? The best person to ask would be people who use it every week. So we really want to keep the user groups and also the friends of Palo Alto Parks and the recreation group, keep them in the loop and harness their passion and their knowledge about the situation. So that's very important. The next group now is ready projects. And that if we had, we've done studies, and now the master plan has confirmed it, if we had the money and the workforce, we'd do these projects right away. One is park restrooms, and the other is dog parks. And so both of those now, we've put on a schedule. And every couple of years, we're going to be turning on a new dog park and a new restroom. That's the plan. And we'll whittle away our deficit one by one. Another thing that became very popular in the surveys was people just don't want the parks in Palo Alto to be a concrete or a plastic Disneyland experience. They want nature in parks. And so we have to make sure that as we remodel these parks and we're adding things left, right, and center, that we keep some nature in the park. Because people want their kids and want them to be able to go to the parks and experience nature. So that came up very high in the surveys, and we want to make sure that's in our plans. The next is programming. Teens are really important in this community, and teen programming is important. And teens are, sports is very popular with teens. Unfortunately, in the high school situation, most of the concentration in high school athletics is varsity sports. And as the schools get bigger and bigger, not everyone played varsity sports. So we want to, we're interested in providing intermural leagues where people can, who aren't varsity class athletes can play, but also just have unstructured play. For example, have a time every week where we show up with a bunch of equipment. And you can go there with your friends and decide whether you want to throw frisbees or throw footballs around or play croquet, whatever. Just a variety ad hoc recreation in the parks. And then also social, and you're developing those social webs that teens really need for support. The next is, we want to fine tune existing programs that are popular. Our aquatic program is very popular, and also our fields and our courts are very popular. We want to try new things, try new aquatic classes that will get new people in the pool. We also have a lot of demand now for pickleball. We've had pickleball, people visit us regularly. So we're going to look at the courts and say, we have tennis courts. Can we also use those for pickleball? So as the demand changes, we want to make sure that our policies change with them. And the final last one in the programming is people wanting new things. They've had the same parks forever, they want new things. And so we can do some pop-up programs, both in recreation and in the parks, and can we do something new and fresh that lasts a month or two? And then we move on to the next thing. So that's the other interest that we have in programming. So the next slide, number four, is the major projects requiring further study. These, we have Coverly, the 10.5 acres in the Baylands, the 7.7 acres up at Foothill Park, and also the Golf Course Clubhouse renovation. These are big projects, and we're not going to do them overnight. And so even if you want to do them in the future, we need to start planning so down the road, we can make wise decisions. So that's in the mix, even though we don't have immediate plans for any of those. And finally, the big one is master plan funding. We have a lot of really good programs in here, but the general fund just can't swallow that. There's no way that we can pay for this. We have to find other revenue sources. And for example, in the school district, the Pi model has worked quite well. That a lot of the school district funding comes through Pi, and people donate to Pi, and Pi helps produce help in the classroom. It's the same thing here. We have Friends of Palo Alto Park and the Recreation Association. We want to see if those can be a conduit of funds into Palo Alto to fund park projects. The others, private donations, like users groups. The Baylands batting cage, it never would have happened if Babe Ruth hadn't paid for it. And that model, and same with the Little League at Hoover Park. So a lot of the, and the groups are willing to do this. If they play soccer and they use a soccer field, they want a good soccer field, and they're willing to pay for it. So we want to keep them engaged and find out how, you know, what can we do to make their experience better? And is that something that they can pay for, that we can pay for? We split the cost? There's a lot of opportunity there. But also, for some of the big things like Coverly, we're not going to get Coverly built with donations. And so we have to consider the things like parcel tax or bond measures to fund some of these big projects. And so that also, that's not trivial to do, to propose and also pass these things. You don't get something for nothing, right? You have to work hard to get your money either way. But those are options for funding the master plan. That is it. Questions?
Okay, so you guys are done with the presentation?
Yeah.
All right, so now with the council members, any questions?
Yeah, actually, a couple of things. First, just want to say, you know, thanks for all the work you do on the commission and, you know, thanks for all the work on the Parks Master Plan. You know, I'll just throw in my two cents, and I know we're going to take this up more later. But, you know, I think that some of the things you're focusing on, like dog parks and adding more bathrooms in the parks, is really important. I mean, for me, this really comes down to accessibility, right? You know, accessibility for families, accessibility for people with disabilities, accessibility for seniors. The bathrooms are really important for all those groups and others. And the dog areas, whether it's on leash on the trails or off leash in parks, you know, that's important for dog hunting families as well. Wanted to ask if, you know, I know we've had a discussion in the past, and we even had somebody from the family that originally had helped Palo Alto acquire Foothills Park. You know, it's an age-old question about what we do with accessibility to Foothills Park. And currently, people who are not Palo Alto residents are able to enter the park, but not able to drive and park in the park. And I was wondering if there was any discussion, or how much discussion there was, about charging a fee, maybe even a steep fee, but charging a fee for non-Palo Alto residents to drive into Foothills Park? And if that has been broached, discussed? I know some consider it a third rail, but I'm not afraid.
Yeah, it is a bit of a third. We haven't talked about that, just because we kind of view that as a council decision, and that if there's direction from council, then we would consider that. But some possibilities are either charging something or, like David suggested, once a month, you let one of the cities in. And one of the things that we're concerned about is that Foothills Park is a beautiful park, and we don't want it overrun. So whatever you do, you have to make sure that you just open the gates and let everyone swarm in. So there are different options for metering use and sharing that. But also, we want to make sure that, number one, the nature isn't impacted and Palo Alto residents are not impacted.
I think that those are both very good points and well taken. I appreciate David for highlighting that during your discussions and Keith for highlighting that this evening. And as we continue our discussions, we'll keep those in mind while also keeping open the question of greater accessibility. And just also wanted to highlight, and thank you for, you know, really thinking carefully about the acquisition question, the long-term, you know, acquisition issue, and also the tough questions we're going to have to ask about funding.
Yeah, it's great to see all of you guys. I mean, we have a pretty new commission, so hopefully you guys will stick together and be working together for a while. I appreciate the point on senior needs. And I do think we need to think about how we shift our programs and things as the senior population grows. I'll just tell you, I'm starting to hear kind of more about conflicts between a senior, say, walking in a park and not hearing bikes come up behind them, that kind of thing. So I really think we need to think about, you know, how do we separate, say, walking paths from bike paths, that kind of thing. Cultural diversity, you know, look around the room. We could definitely use more diversity. I would suggest maybe you guys reach out to people you know to help you think about kinds of programs that would appeal to more diverse groups in the city, to really bring in more representation, even maybe as, you know, assistance to yourselves or officially or unofficially, even on an ad hoc basis. I'm sure it'll come up later tonight, but do you think we should think about limiting the use of parks for private events? I mean, we had a lot of feedback, I'm sure you guys had feedback on that. We just heard from the Palo Alto Youth Council, and they actually started an intramural basketball tournament at Gunn. It seemed like it was really successful. So I really do think there's a pent-up demand for kind of intramural sports that any kid can play, it's not a cut sport. And maybe even something where with some support from you guys, you could work with the youth council to help foster some of these things and not actually take a lot of the staff resources. It was something to think about. I did want to say, I'm interested in supporting the Magical Bridge expansion. I know it's expanding into other cities. And if you guys, you know, hear about opportunities in Palo Alto, I don't know if you see, I think it's something, come back to council as well. But we'll talk about it later tonight, but I don't know if all you guys will stick around. The facilities that are city-owned but not parks, like Winter Lodge and Gamble Garden, I do think we need to bring them on to the list as things that we track. So may not be in the master plan. I'd like to see them added as kind of park-like facilities that we pay attention to. And just quickly, a couple of comments. I did really like the prioritization section of the Parks Master Plan. I thought it was a great example of how to think about projects that are maybe important and expensive and longer term versus critical things, and also short-term opportunities that maybe don't cost very much. It's really good to get that mix. And I'd love to see other plans we do adopt that approach. I found it really useful, so kudos on that. I thought, like, the Golf Clubhouse facilities and possibly a gym, call out maybe for some private donations, maybe even selling naming rights. And that might be something that you guys can drive forward as a commission. And then lastly, I think we're going to start to see a lot of focus on Coverly. And I'd really like to see you guys get involved and help drive that forward as well. It's a huge opportunity. It's going to be hopefully a lot of, you know, rec center and community center activities there, so. My thoughts, thanks.
Lydia?
Yes, thank you for the work that you all have done on it, including the past members. I think that they spent a lot of time on that, too, right? So I just have some questions. One is on the community outreach, I think packet page 109. I did not see any of the senior housing facilities or the low-income groups, also La Camita. So is that part of, I don't know if it's too late to reach out to them to see what are their needs and what their thoughts are in terms of what's needed in the community for them? Then also, I noticed that there was a page where you mentioned a gymnasium, building a gymnasium perhaps over at Coverly. What, how does a gymnasium, I mean, what would be included in the gymnasium? If you can elaborate on that a little bit for me later. And would it include a swimming pool there? I know that's a very expensive one. Also, on the, in the staff report, expand programs for seniors. And it says in there on packet page 189 that it's, you, staff will coordinate the effort with Avenidas. And I hope as we're doing that, that we keep reminding that La Camita is an integral part of the senior programs offered. So I'd really like to see that stay there, and if that's something that can be coordinated. And then, you know, when, Keith, we were talking about the sports that, like pickleball. So is that something that the community comes and tells you that they want? And then how do you assess which one is the more popular ones and which ones are not? Because I also hear cricket is another popular sport in the community. So, you know, how do you weigh which one you pick or?
Well, in the past, we would have been doing a lot of guessing. The master plan really does help us with that. We've done the surveys. Now, the problem with the surveys is they were just, they weren't statistically significant in the sense that we didn't make sure that we got a certain amount from each type of group. They were just whoever happened to answer that survey. We went out to intercepts. If people were at the farmer's market and were willing to stop, we got their input. If they were not at the farmer's market, we didn't get them on that date. So we went to a lot of different locations to search out different types of people. We looked online and had different, you know, anyone could have gone online and answered that question. But we can't guarantee that we got all the cricket ball people, for example. So that, there was some cricket response, but not an overwhelming cricket response. But from pickleball, that was, the people showed up at our meeting and expressed, now a couple of meetings, their interest in pickleball. And to a certain extent, the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
It sure does, because I know that within the Indian community, cricket is a very, very big sport. And so I do hear from them, but like you said, you know, you have to show up at the meetings and be involved with the surveys and so forth. So that would be the diversity part that Tom, Councilmember DuBois was talking about. Then there was a couple of things in the staff report that page 216. It talks about, has a list of all the leased land acres that are counted. And I noticed that there are two that are leased from Stanford. So we count their numbers into our numbers, into our total land?
Correct, they're dedicated parks.
Okay. And then there's also impact fees. Are they paid one time? I think it is only paid at the time when they get their permit or their building permit or?
I believe so, but I'm not an expert.
It's a one-time payment. So if a building is knocked down and then it's rebuilt, are those fees based on the new score footage? Or is it based on the entire score footage for the new building?
So this is more of the study session with them, but I mean, we're going to do the parks thing ourselves. So I think the focus should be on them, not on asking the staff questions.
I was going to say that, too. Just to answer your question, though, that every time a building is rebuilt, then the park impact fees are reassessed.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm done.
Adrian?
So thank you all very much for coming tonight. I just want to lodge you on this plan. I think it's really comprehensive, has a good schedule of projects, efforts, costs, and priorities. As Councilmember DuBois mentioned, I really do think the implementation section is helpful in terms of time span, in terms of funding, in terms of long-term cost to the city. That's really helpful to us. I also think there are a lot of inputs in here. As the chair was mentioning, there were intercept surveys, there were online surveys. I actually really like kind of the mapping surveys, where you could see what people were thinking in a certain location. I think that's really relevant to parks and rec. Just a few broad comments and just one kind of, maybe it's a question. I really appreciate some of the specific focus on dog parks, on connectedness and accessibility, as well as new uses for existing spaces. And I think that was actually kind of just a theme I saw in the plan, not called out in the principles, but kind of diversity of uses or uses at different times or kind of temporary things. Like you mentioned something about like the pocket parks. So there was some theme there that just didn't seem called out, but I kind of saw in the plan. And then just last comment, completely agree with Councilmember DuBois, that Coverly could be the next big thing. It would be helpful to see what the commission thinks there. Thank you very much.
Karen?
Thank you. And we have several new commissioners, so thank you for applying. And thank you to some of you, I guess Keith in particular, he's been there the longest, so.
The old man, huh?
I share your pain. But thank you all for your service. It's much appreciated. And the master plan is, you can all, and prior commissioners can feel proud of it. A few things. One is, you talk about partnerships of a different kind, but, so if there was one complaint I heard about the Lucy Evans Interpretive Center opening was, nobody knew about it. So, because there were people who really wanted to be there and go, I didn't even know what was happening. So where that leads me is, would you think about partnering with other organizations to help promote things that are consistent with your, and thus the city, goals in terms of education? For instance, like, you know, partner with Audubon to do, not just in the open spaces, but we have these connectors, you know, that we've set up in the plan. Maybe do partner events with Audubon. Same thing with Canopy. Canopy does tree walks, maybe parks tree walks, as opposed to just street tree walks. But just, you know, think about it. Go back to what Councilmember DuBois said about dedicating our undedicated places now. When, no, a different thing here. So I know there's a city policy, but I don't know how firm it is or how identified it is, about vehicles in our parks. And most especially, I would say, our parks are open space areas. And what kind of brought this to the forefront with me is I was in Foothills Park a little while back, and there was, well, you want people to, you know, carpool. There was a tour bus of such a size that it was like just really out of keeping with Foothills Park. And it was so big that when it was going from the lookout point above and coming down and going to the meadow, it got stuck. So it couldn't make the turn, literally. And I ran into somebody else out there who was like, really? I mean, it was so, you know, deer and this bus. So it just, so maybe I'll take a look at that, see what's appropriate for size of vehicles. A thought for, a thought for you all to consider is, because a lot of the, a lot of the things that we're concerned about in the community is having recreation space and downtime spaces for our youth, did it make sense to just float the idea of having a youth liaison to Parks and Rec Commission? So think about that. Coverly, yes, but I would add to that fries. Coverley, yes, but I would add to that fries. It doesn't get too much attention, but I think fries is another like really big opportunity for all manner of things, including parkland. Rob has heard me mention this probably every year for how many years, is a Parks and Rec app. I think it's kind of amazing that we don't have one where, you know, people can get the app and see where, you know, where the parks are, where the trails are, where the newest recreation facility is, how far it is from here to there. I just, it seems like, hey, get the youth liaison to do it. And I think the last thing I would, I would bring up is, I think it was Keith, you, or David, one of you brought up something about what people want when you survey them. They want, you know, to be connected with nature and they don't want just, you know, plastic and that sort of thing. And without being critical about it, I just, I just will reference some number of comments that I've heard over the years about the playground at Heritage Park, is that it's a lot of plastic and, you know, off the shelf as opposed to Magical Bridge Playground, which everything's kind of more organic and natural and, and expensive, yes. But kind of like, what, what kind of standards might we develop for play equipment in, in our parks? Mitchell Park Playground has, you know, concrete structures and stuff that the fourth graders from Fair Meadow School went to bat for several years ago to keep. And the city was thinking of like, you know, moving all of that along and been there for a long time. And the fourth graders were like, no, we love this stuff. So, so I think those, those cover my points.
I mean, one thing that we did find in the surveys is that people don't want to go to the, each park and have the same playground at each park.
I would agree with that.
They want a variety at each park, and so they want us to mix it up.
Absolutely. I would agree.
And that's where things like Mitchell is very nice, because there are very unique facilities there.
Yeah, good. So thank you all very much.
Liz?
So could I, would you indulge me in something?
Maybe.
I want to ask each one of you what your favorite park is, starting with the entrants.
Gosh, so the two that pop up to my.
The two that pop up to my mind right away were Mitchell and Rinconada, so I'm sorry. Those are my, my favorite in town parks, and I have to add Foothill to that. So you really can't have one favorite here in Palo Alto.
But you can have three favorites tonight.
I have three tonight.
Yeah. Ryan, what's yours?
Foothills is very near and dear to my heart. I'm a downtown resident though, and so Johnson Park and Heritage Park are the two that I frequent.
Since one of my favorites, yeah. Jeff?
Yeah, so I have a five-year-old and his absolute favorite park is Party Park. He also likes to go to Magical Bridge, but he really likes Eleanor Party Park. And then for me, I really enjoy going out to Foothills.
Foothills must be a more adult park, I think.
Yes. I, I really think we're very lucky to have Foothills Park. It's such a wonderful park. It's unique. Other cities around here don't have that, so we're very lucky. So that has to be on your list. But also, my neighborhood park is also Robles Park, and I've spent many hours there with the kids, so they have soft spot merit for that.
David?
I think Foothills Park wins. That's my favorite park and I use it all the time. And then I'm very, right behind Coverley Field, and I consider it my city park, even though it doesn't have all the amenities. It's wonderful.
Yeah, it's great open space.
Yeah.
Don McDougall?
So, so it'd be inappropriate not to put Foothills on the list, but, but I think Baylands is, is really, really important. And I think what Bixby is becoming and can become is really spectacular. I frankly would say Foothills is a jewel, but Bixby is where I go every other day.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Jeff?
Foothills Park first.
Well, you guys are a bit redundant.
Sure. Mitchell Park, and I'll throw out a new one, the soccer fields at Mayfield where I've spent many hours as well.
Oh, that's, that's interesting. Thank you for sharing that, because I rode around this weekend to take a look and I thought, it's interesting to see which ones are the most used. I didn't see that in the report though, and maybe it's in there somewhere, but I would say Johnson for kids from about three to eight was hands down. You know, make sure you have cardboard so you can go down the slide. That's remarkable, tons of parents there, easy access. And it's interesting to hear Foothill because that's probably, it probably is a more adult park, even though it's fun for kids to go up there. But I know when my kids were little, we went to every park. Who said for variety that, that that's what people want? Didn't you, Keith? Yeah, so what people do want is different things at different parks. And I remember they would ask to go to the Bumblebee Park or the Jumpy Park, whatever it was. And, and we, we are rich in parks. We are so fortunate. And we're unusually fortunate in having Foothills. Just one other comment. I noticed all the dog parks are in the south and the gardens are in the north. Is there a reason for that, Mr. DeGuse? I'm teasing, anyway, but I thought that was interesting. I don't know how that happened, but that, that's the truth, right? So I guess we need a garden more to the south than we need a dog park in the north. Okay, thank you all for serving. I really appreciate it. I think you might have one of the more enjoyable commissions, right? Thanks.
Craig?
Yeah, so also, yeah, thank you for your work. Really appreciate it. This is impressive. So just four comments. So just to echo what Councilmember DuBois said, which in terms of naming rights, I know funding is a big concern. We are in a wealthy community and naming rights might be a good way to raise money and pay for some of the improvements, acquisitions that are desired. So I think strongly look at that. San Diego actually has a very active program, so you guys might want to look at that. I think they raised $200,000 through naming route, naming rights, so they're selling off naming right for baseball tee or stuff like that. So I think definitely look at that. One idea I heard from a resident about Foothill is instead of necessarily just letting everyone else in, what you could do is you discharge more, perhaps for, for non-residents to go to Foothill Park. So that's something else to think about. And I think, I think that's something which you could also extend to other areas besides Foothill. To what Councilmember Cruz said earlier, which is about La Camita. So I actually met with some of the board members yesterday, and they're looking for a home. And so one of the things that came up during my discussions with them is perhaps being able to temporarily, or maybe more permanently, have, seeing on the outside, near the, where La Camita is right now, to have some kind of outdoor eating areas with some shade. So this is just kind of fresh off the presto speak from my meeting yesterday, but something maybe you guys could explore with, with them. And then my last comment is also from Councilmember Cruz, which is, I also have heard a ton of people requesting cricket fields. I'm not sure if you guys ever got that, but I've, I've gone it so many times, so I, and I, I've gotten so much, I do wonder why we don't have any. So just out of curiosity, your surveys, what do your surveys say right now?
I don't have the numbers off the top, but, I mean, one of the big problems with cricket is it takes such a big field. If you have a true cricket field, it's huge, but there are ways around that, but.
Did, and did the survey say anything about it, or is it totally not?
Do you remember, Rob?
It came up, but it wasn't overwhelming.
Okay, so I do wonder if we're getting a good representative sample, because I've gone at it so often that I wonder, you know, what's going on. So, yeah, if you could find out, thank you.
Love the mic here. So first of all, thank all you, thank all you folks and your predecessors for all this. We've seen this evolving over, you know, a period of multiple years here, so I think that's part of the reason they're serving, you're not getting blistered with new questions here, because, you know, it's been a work of love for so long. I want to ask a question about aquatics. And what's, what's your intuition as to, I mean, I know we're going to, I know there's some possibility to expand it, the use of the existing facilities, but what's your intuition as to how close we are to capacity on Rinconada right now as an aquatics complex? I mean, are we 50% of the way there, or 90% of the way there, or 10% of the way there? What do you, what do you think? Have you guys looked at that? Yeah, we're all looking at, we're all looking at Ann.
I mean, it also depends on the density, and that's one of the trade-offs, is that you can cram a lot of people in a pool and there's diminishing returns after a while because people are enjoying it less, but maybe Ann can give you better.
Well, I, it's a hard question, right? I think that it's really important, from my perspective, to expand the amount of people in the pool to make use, and what I mean is to make use of the water and so make sure that the water's being used on a regular basis. There are people in the pool all the time and we're able to respond to lessons, to lifeguarding, to staffing the pool, and also to creating and maintaining the quality programs that we offer right now to the residents. So having said that, as a swimming person, there's always a need for more water. So there, I think there's a need for a new pool someplace in Palo Alto, either in the south or by using one or two of the school district pools. So I think the short answer is, we need more water. We need to take advantage of all the facilities we have and enable our staff to make sure that they can appropriately staff so that people can use the pool.
Because I think, so, so yeah, like, I mean, Rinconada, which is in, in north of Embarcadero, right? Just barely, right? Is sort of the main Palo Alto aquatics complex. But I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's anything as that, that's sort of the scale of Rinconada and Burgess, right? Until you get down into at least Sunnyvale, maybe Santa Clara as well. I mean, Mountain View's got a couple of little tiny ones and so forth. And I wonder if we were to build something in, if we were able to put, if we were to put something in South Palo Alto, right? I wonder if there's some possibility to share with Mountain View, right? I mean, sort of out there in wacky, out there thinking land, right? Because you're talking about reaching out to other groups and so.
I mean, I don't think it's crazy thinking. I think it's, it's good to explore other opportunities with other cities, and then there's a lot of how would that run and how would that happen? But I think another pool in South Palo Alto would be really terrific for the aquatic community and for those who need to be in the aquatic community too.
Okay. Right. Okay.
So I also want to thank you for your service. You know, Parks and Rec is, is one of those things that I always feel really comfortable is really doing a good job and focusing it as close to the community and getting it done. And we have to do less, which is one of those things that actually seems to work really well. You know, I think we have a lot more oversight of what happens at PTC. We get more involved in the Utilities Commission, I think. But you guys really go out and make a lot of decisions, frankly, that really impact the community. In looking through the master plan, I think it was a really good job. I think the hard part, though, starts after the master plan. And, you know, the master plan, while it's, it's hard to put together, one of the things we have a history in Palo Alto, I think, at least prior to maybe the last five, six, seven years, is we would do these fabulous studies, master plans, and then people would say, there's no funding, and they'd put them in the draw. And I think you really looked at the bike and pedestrian master plan, not this one, but the previous one. No one ever did anything, there's an alley study in Palo Alto that talks about how we could better use our alley, alleys. No one sits around, talks about how we fund it, it sits in the draw. There's a lot of those studies that we do. We're really good at doing studies. And the reason I'm leading up to this is, I really do think that the next big job of you guys is to figure out how to fund this and that we can't just leave in the draw. And that's going to take council focus and you having more interaction. I for one think that we should have a 2018 ballot measure to start funding this and, and providing at least, you might be able to raise a lot of money and you also would then have money to match funding groups that you've talked about. And I think coming forward to council and saying, you know, let's put something on the ballot and then having the Parks and Rec actually act as the way the Finance Committee or we had a separate committee when we did the infrastructure of Blue Ribbon, you know, council acted as that committee where we did polling, we looked at it. And I think the Parks and Rec Committee would be a much better choice on a Parks, how to implement this and figure out that. So I think that could be a huge task that, and frankly, would have an outcome that would be fantastic for everyone, because I think what we're limited by is money. And parks are something that everyone gets behind in Palo Alto and everyone wants. And there's really, as you said, there's unlimited demand almost, right? If you gave people $100 in that exercise, they would have come up with more stuff. We'd have a dog park on every street. But, no, I mean, so I think that's something that I really would like you guys to focus on and I'd like the council to work with you on. The other thing I wanted to talk a little bit about was the ITT antenna field site in the Baylands. I mean, I think we've undersold this, right? And I realize it's part of Bixby Park out there, but it's the largest dedication of parkland. I don't know, that's what occurred in 50 years? I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, it's 35 acres and I, I can't remember the last time, I'd have to ask Lidge, she might know. When was the last time we dedicated 35 acres of new parkland in Palo Alto? That's, it's a huge number.
Nope, haven't done it.
So I think that's something that we should celebrate in this community and let people know. And I was talking to the city manager today about that, because right now it's scheduled for being on consent calendar, and I understand why it should go on consent calendar and that, I don't think anyone here is going to fight the dedication of the 35 acres of parkland. But on the other hand, we do want the community to know that this is a big deal and we're doing this. I, I thought Tom's comment, I wanted to pick up on that, is, it's unclear to me, and it sort of depends on the different interpretations over the years of what our city attorneys have looked at. I remember Gary Baum being our city attorney and having a very restrictive view of what can go in a park and what can't go in a park. And so I think some of these things we have to decide, like under Gary's interpretation, I believe that you would not be able to host weddings at Gamble Gardens on a regular basis if we made that, if we made that parkland. So I don't necessarily think that would be Molly's interpretation, but I don't know. But the point I have is, is that I think the notion of park-like facilities, that we start including that, as opposed to necessarily dedicating Gamble Gardens, for instance. I mean, I think we have to think about what currently occurs, and, you know, I live near Gamble Gardens, so I'm seeing all the events they have all the time, and I'm seeing people there all the time doing weddings, and I see that they rent out different parts of the facilities. And we had the issue about private events recently on a park. Gamble Gardens has a lot of private events, at least they seem to, as I go by. So I think we want to think about park-like facilities and how we implement those without actually dedicating it as, as parkland. Or if we do decide we want to dedicate a parkland, we start deciding if we're going to have one rule fits all, if we're going to have different rules for different parks. I mean, Litton Plaza is a park, I believe, right? And what's appropriate in Litton Plaza, in my view, is totally different than what's appropriate in Johnson Park, right? And so that's really what I'm thinking and getting at, as I think about this. I also think, in the Parks Master Plan, we talk about putting as much solar, I'm paraphrasing, as much as we can throughout our parks is sort of the way I read it. So one of the things I, I would have concerns about, because I obviously think that's a good thing, but if we're going to put solar on buildings and that solar is going to be with a, you know, some sort of a company where we lock in for a 20-year period, and then you're going to need to remodel that building, what is going to be the buyout to take that solar down, to have it moved to somewhere else? I think those are the questions that need to be asked, because some of the facilities in some of our parks might need to be remodeled soon. For instance, putting solar on top of Coverley and entering a long-term contract for 20 years would be a really stupid thing. And I bring that up because everyone recognizes it would be a stupid thing. But there may be trade-offs, you know, in other places where we do that, that I think just because it's solar, I think we need to ask the question. And that's what I would encourage you to do, is always ask the question is, how does this limit us in the future of what we want to do and how do we mitigate against that? Because oftentimes you can mitigate against it. I did want to just briefly address some of the Foothill stuff. So when I first joined council, we were in the depths of the recession, which is sort of a different feeling. So we actually did what Councilmember Tadaka sometimes talked about with it. We looked at Foothills Park and we said to ourselves, if we need to raise money, what would it, how would we raise money by charging for Foothills Park? And our determination at that point was it would cost more money to charge for Foothill Park than it would raise, frankly. And I, I think that was pretty clear to all of us. We talked about even not having people and doing drop boxes and, and all of that, and we went through all sorts of things about, well, is that really cost-effective? Does that work? And, and all of that. So I actually think those are, after having done that in 2010, I don't think those are things worth spending time and money and effort on. So I would discourage you from moving in that direction. What else did I want to basically say on this? Yeah, Coverley. So I do think Coverley is a huge thing, but I also think it could take away from your, your larger mission. And I worry a little bit that the school district doesn't know what it wants to do with Coverley. The council doesn't know what it wants to do with Coverley. We haven't hashed that out. And we could hash out one thing and the school district could hash out another thing and it could all change. And I'm not saying you shouldn't spend time on it. I'm just saying in terms that I think could be effective, I think that you should. could be effective, I think that you should have more distinct questions to answer about Cubberly with better direction from the council, and frankly, for where the school district is, before you embark on a large Cubberly exercise. So those were, those are my thoughts, and I did want to say I really do appreciate all the work you guys do.
Greg, could I add one thing to Foothill?
Sure.
Could you do like a 15-second round?
Yes, we'll have a 15-second round, since I must have really...
Mine's just information. Sometime back when we wanted to buy a piece of property that is adjacent to the Arastha property, the old Bressler property, if any of you remember that, there was a deal made with the county, that the park is open to everyone, you cannot drive in, but you can walk through it, you can hike through it, and it's all in writing, and it's all an agreement with the county. So while we may not think it's open, it's simply not open to drive in. For the most part, almost anyone could drive in during the week, there's no one there, it's very underused, but, and I will say it in public, I, I, I don't think it is, I don't think it's wise to look at altering the current situation, put succinctly.
All right, why don't we do a quick 10- to 15-second round, but we can just start this way. Tom?
Yeah, well, Liz reminded me, I meant to mention the community gardens, I think South Palo Alto lost two community gardens recently, there's one left, so I definitely think there's a need for community gardens in South Palo Alto.
No, Cory?
Yeah, actually, to pick you up on what a couple of my colleagues had mentioned, we did just have the Youth Council in here earlier today, I think the idea of communicating with them and having some kind of a youth liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission is worth exploring, and it was interesting that we heard from our Youth Council, from Palo Alto's Youth Council, that something fun, preferably free or low-cost, where you could hang out, you could study, but you could also hang out and socialize, near the, each of the high schools, was something they were looking for, you know, they said, you know, the Gunn students wished they had something like Town Country, you know, near Gunn, and I think for both schools, you know, they wished it's something like the Mitchell Park Community Center, which is a great place, which is, that's close to one of the middle schools, they wished that there was something like that near the high schools that was accessible to high school students. I'm not sure where that conversation will go, but I thought it was interesting and worth noting in a future discussion.
Liz, anything further?
I just simply noticed that Ann seems to be the only woman on the Commission.
Eric, anything further?
Greg? No, Karen?
Just one quick one, I think Ann did, I think Ann doesn't seem to be the only, I think she is the only, I think is the only woman on the Commission, I did notice that earlier. Just support for something, I think Councilmember Fine said earlier, which was pocket parks. I don't think we give enough attention or consideration for how to, how to get pocket parks, so, just want to put a plug in for those.
Yeah, and that just reminded me, what Karen just said, is, if you are going to look at this funding plan and stuff, I do think in senior plan, that there are these little opportunities where you do see these corner lots come up, or something where there could be an opportunity to buy a small little piece and put a park in a neighborhood, that could be really effective. And I, I mean, I realize that, you know, it could be a couple million bucks for that little lot, but, you know, if we had funding, and I think people might actually vote in this town for dedicated funding to buy parks, I actually would be surprised if they don't, I think that would work. So anyway, thank you very much, really appreciate your service.
Thank you all for serving, really. The labor of love.
And now if we want to go back into the council chambers.